Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda De Shazo. I'm the Executive Director for the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, and I wanted to say thank you for being here tonight for the City of Tacoma's Candidate Forum for Positions 7 and 8. The Affordable Housing Consortium does advocacy and education to promote affordable housing development across Pierce County. And we host these forums in partnership with the League of Women Voters to help inform voters on where candidates stand on their issues for affordable housing and homelessness. And I appreciate you tuning in. So I will introduce Cynthia Stewart, who's going to be our moderator tonight from the League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the League, I'd also like to welcome you tonight to this General Election Candidate Forum with candidates running again for Tacoma City Council at Large Positions 7 and 8. My name is Cynthia Stewart, and I will be the moderator. And we are partnering with the University of Washington Tacoma. And with us is Karen Lynn, who is with the University of Washington, and she is going to be a co-moderator. So also with us tonight are Teri Baker, who will be the timer, and Teresa Power-Dudus, who is hidden there and managing the Zoom system. So before we begin the actual forum, Karen will give the land acknowledgement, please.
The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadows of Mount Tacoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities.
Thank you. So about the League of Women Voters, we're a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens and government. Our mission is defending democracy and empowering voters, and that is why we hold these forums as a service to the public. Candidate forums provide an opportunity to compare and contrast the candidates before voting in the general election. The League also influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League is open to any person age 16 or older who subscribes to the purpose of the League and includes men as well as women. Karen?
The candidates with us tonight are from Positions... For Position 7, Ogie Diaz and Christian Nguyen. Position 8, Christina Walker and Todd Brisky. The Candidate Forum for Tacoma City Council District 3 will be on October 10. Before we begin, the candidates have been given round rules in advance, which include, among other provisions, that they will adhere to the rules of common courtesy and will not comment on the other candidates, but will focus on the issues and that there will be no other recordings made of this forum. Could we please confirm that each of you have agreed to these rules?
Yes.
If you have questions... If you have questions for the candidates, you may text them to this number 253-439-9343. Again, that is 253-439-9343. Candidates will be timed as they answer and may finish their sentences if they receive the signal to end, but may not continue to speak after that. All candidates will be asked the same question.
Okay, so let's begin. Before we ask questions, we've given the candidates each two minutes to give an opening statement. And at the end, the candidates will give a closing statement of up to one minute. So we'll go ahead and start the opening statements, and we'll begin with Ogie Diaz.
Thank you. Is there a timer for this one?
Two minutes.
Oh, I just was confirming that she was going to time it.
You're asking where it is. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It was helpful to find your Zoom score. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thanks so much to the League of Women Voters and UW-Tacoma for facilitating this event and to the Affordable Housing Consortium of Tacoma Pierce County for pulling us together for this really important critical topic. I would like to thank everyone virtually who is logged in watching as well, and maybe if the recording becomes available, those who get to watch later. Like all of you, I love this city. I love every part of Tacoma. I was born and raised in Pierce County. I grew up in an immigrant, military, and union household that valued compassion, empathy, and our community above all else. Tacoma is at its best when our neighborhoods are well-resourced, affordable, and easy to get around. All Tacomens deserve to feel safe and cared for, especially our most vulnerable communities. When the reality is that a person would need to work 80 hours per week to afford a two-bedroom rental at the fair market rate in Tacoma, it's clear we, as a council and as a city and community, have an obligation to address this issue head-on. Tonight, I'm going to share how I plan to build on the work I've started as your Sitting-at-Large Council member currently, having been appointed last year, and lay out some solutions and strategies we have to address our city's pressing issues of affordable housing and homelessness. I've rented around the city and am now lucky enough to own a home in Tacoma, but I know firsthand that that dream is way too out of reach for too many Tacomens. So part of the reason why I stepped up and replied for this appointment was to address these issues head-on, and I'm really looking forward to the dialogue that we have ahead of us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next opening statement will be Kristen Nguyen.
You're muted.
Sorry. Thank you very much. I want to thank the Affordable Housing Consortium and the League of Women for hosting this forum because local elections truly matter. I'm Kristen Nguyen, running for Tacoma City Council, Position 7. I'm a mom, award-winning business owner, community volunteer, and attorney. I helped open and actively volunteer for a 24/7 shelter and drop-in center for youth experiencing homelessness in Tacoma. I've provided free legal advice at neighborhood clinics, raised funds for medical services for low-income families at Good Sam Hospital, and over the last two years led a grassroots organization advocating for more public safety in Tacoma. I'm running for City Council to increase community safety, expand economic opportunity, and address homelessness and unsanctioned encampments. Despite unacceptable rates of crime, the council has not sufficiently prioritized our safety. Too many people are suffering. I'm proud to be endorsed by our police because they know, based on my work with them, that I can bring residents, business owners, and policymakers together to bring change. We also need more family wage jobs so people can afford to live in Tacoma and that we can have the tax base we need to deliver the level of services our residents expect. I know that when we work where we live, it's best for our family, our health, and our environment. And finally, too many of our vulnerable neighbors are suffering in unsafe and unsanitary conditions because of failed policies. As your council member, I will act quickly with compassionate and measurable solutions to make real change. Thank you again for this opportunity. I look forward to this evening's conversation.
Thank you. And next for Position 8 is Christina Walker.
Thank you. And my camera is showing as black, so I don't know if you can see me.
We're seeing a frozen screen.
Okay. If it's okay with you, I'll do my intro and then I'll jump off and come back in. I don't know what else to do at this point. I've tried every video setting. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Okay, I apologize. I don't know what's happening.
Why don't you hang on just one second, Christina? Let me see if there's something I can do. Because I did make you into a panelist, so you should be able to... No, I guess that's the only choice you have. But I'll be watching for you, and I'll make you a panelist again if need be.
Okay, thank you.
What I would like to do, though, is go ahead with Mr. Brisky, though, while we're waiting.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brisky, why don't you go ahead and give your opening statement? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Todd Brisky. I've been a... I've headed Tacoma address my entire life. I grew up in Midland, about a mile outside town. After I graduated from UW-Tacoma, I moved into the Harmon Lofts downtown, lived there for about 14 years. Eventually, in 2019, when the housing market was starting to really get high, I was able to buy my house in the Lincoln District, where I've been living since then. I originally got into this race because I went to and graduated from the City of Tacoma Citizens Academy, where we went through all the different divisions in the police department. I was able to talk to the officers and detectives and find out the current state of things. Finding out that the call-response time for a Priority 1 call was like 10 minutes. We've got homicide detectives working three cases at a time. We've got so many car thefts now that they even have to take those over the phone. That was what launched me into start my campaign. I always knew that the housing costs were super high, especially after I bought my house, a house that I could no longer afford to buy if I was trying right now. But I didn't know quite how bad the rental market was. After doing research, finding out that the average studio apartment is $1,400 in the city of Tacoma, where a minimum-wage worker should only be spending about $800, assuming that 30% housing allowance. That's unacceptable. We need to do better. We need to make sure that there's apartments out there that everybody can get ahold of and rent and be happy and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Christina Walker, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, and good evening. Sorry about my technical difficulties. I am Christina Walker. I currently serve in Position Number 8, one of the at-large positions, currently serving as Deputy Mayor and running for that position. I live in Tacoma in District 3 with my two kids and my husband. Prior to serving on council, I ran a nonprofit called Downtown On the Go, focused on transportation issues in Tacoma. Currently, in addition to my leadership position as Deputy Mayor, I also serve as the Chair of the Infrastructure Planning and Sustainability Committee, or IPS. And I think importantly for this conversation, I also chair the Joint Municipal Action Committee, or JMAC, which is two elected officials from seven different agencies in the tribe coming together once a month to solve some of Tacoma's most pressing issues. And of course, one of those is housing and homelessness. We talk about that very broadly, both as a committee, but also on the Tacoma City Council. We are working to address affordable housing through our Affordable Housing Action Strategy. We're working to address homelessness. We're working on the Home in Tacoma Plan. We have worked in the past to update our multifamily tax exemption to make sure that there's incentives to build more affordable housing in more places around the city and continue to have conversations about what kind of bonuses we can add for affordable housing. And it also includes the work we do around making sure our permitting is easy and quick for affordable housing projects. I also wanted... There are the other issue that I wanted to highlight, but just touch really briefly on is transportation. I know our focus here is housing, but I find the two are very intertwined, and it's super important for us to build affordable housing along transit routes and in walkable neighborhoods, both for the quality of life of the people that are living in that housing and also for their ability to connect to the economy and to jobs in Tacoma. So looking forward to the conversation and really looking forward to talking about how we get creative around solving this most pressing of issues in Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll begin the questions. And for most questions, each candidate has 90 seconds to respond, although we may on occasion announce a slightly different, longer or shorter time. The candidate speaking first on each question will rotate among you. I will ask the first question, and then Karen and I will rotate who asked the questions. And since Ms. Diaz began the opening statements, we will begin the questions with Kristen Nguyen. So the first question, and this has already been alluded to. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, a person earning the minimum wage would need to work 80 hours a week to afford a two-bedroom rental at fair market rent in Tacoma. How do you plan to address the affordable housing crisis in our city? And what specific policies will you advocate for to ensure housing affordability? Ms. Nguyen? You're muted. Please unmute.
Thank you very much. Working to increase housing supply at all levels, both homeownership and rental, is critically important to addressing housing affordability. We must find... We must find ways to allow for growth so that we can meet the projected population. And obviously, the more supply we have will help bring down that terrible statistic you've just cited. The policies I would support include encouraging the development of ADUs and multifamily housing by reducing permit barriers and costs and offering pre-approved plans so that we can speed the process along for actual development of new housing. We need to also streamline permitting. And one idea I have is convening a meeting of all the stakeholders, so developers, builders, architects, to understand better what are the barriers in the city's process currently? Where is the delay? Because delay costs money. Are there things that we could do to streamline the permitting process? And the best way to get that information is from the people who are actually working day in, day out. With regard to rental housing, we must make sure we're finding a balanced approach and avoid placing two owners' requirements so that we drive the mom-and-pop providers, which there are quite a number of them, out of the housing market altogether. My fear is that will actually result in a less supply and higher costs for renters themselves.
Thank you. So next, we go to Christina Walker for the same question.
Great, thank you for that question. And not to oversimplify, but we need to build more housing. And of course, how we get there is quite a bit more complex. We have the Affordable Housing Action Strategy, which is an incredible document that we have been working at for many years. And it is not a document that sits on the shelf. We have an entire team dedicated to working through the strategies in the Affordable Housing Action Strategy. We have made a huge amount of progress and including things like updating the MFT that I talked about earlier, the multifamily tax exemption. I'm working now on the anti-displacement strategies that are within that document. And I think it's really important that we pass the Rental Housing Code to address some of the reasons that people are not able to stay in their housing. Also, supporting funding rental supports to keep people housed is a huge part of this. But bottom line is, it is unacceptable that people would have to work 80 hours to afford housing in this community. And so this is something that we need to continue to work on as a community, both in partnership with you all, but also within the city on the Affordable Housing Action Strategy.
Thank you. So next, we go to Todd Brisky.
So a minimum wage earner making $1,574 an hour times 40 times 52 divided by 12 times 30 for a housing allotment ends up being about $800. When you're looking on Zillow, Rent.com, Apartments.com, there's about two apartments, studio apartments in Tacoma right now that are for rent under that amendment. So anybody making a minimum wage has two options in the entire city. The city's planner right now with the MFTEs allow an eight-year tax exemption for four affordable housing units in a new project. Problem is, affordable housing unit is 70% of AMI times 30%, which ends up being about $1,300. $1,300 is not affordable for this minimum wage earner. I don't know how many $1,300 apartments you've got to build in order to get down to $800, but it's a lot. My plan would be to, of course, allow people to build ADUs. But then I also want to focus on starter homes. Building houses two or three times AMI that the average Tacoman could actually afford, start to build equity, and then move into a bigger house and secure their financial future. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, we go to Ogie Diaz.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest ways that we can address our affordable housing crisis is exactly, as the Deputy Mayor pointed out, implementing our Affordable Housing Action Strategy. It is a living document. Some of the biggest and most reachable pieces in there that we're currently working on is increasing our housing stock through innovative projects like Home in Tacoma, diversifying the kind of zoning that we have within the city so that we can increase the amount of stock that is available and creating opportunities for our public and private housing developers to work within that framework. So simplifying the code, making it easier for public and private developers to figure out. That way, there's more effort and more work going directly into the building because it is so critically needed. Even if we built everything we need for right now, it will still not be built fast enough just because construction takes time. We also need to utilize more tools that currently exist. For example, I helped create a 20-year MFT exemption at the state level when I was lobbying for a local conservation organization, and we did that in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And I think that we have some more tools in the toolbox that we can keep utilizing. I'd also love to see the city get more creative with more partnerships and trying to get access to more state and federal funding opportunities for things like community land trust or cooperative housing models and some of these new innovative ways that we can bring more housing online quicker for the folks in need now.
Thank you. So next, we go to Karen.
So on to the next question in regards to addressing homelessness. One year ago, Tacoma implemented a camping ban as part of its approach to addressing homelessness. Could you please share your stance on this camping ban? Do you believe it has been effective in addressing homelessness in the city? If not, what alternative strategies or policies would you propose to address homelessness in Tacoma? Can we please start with Christina Walker?
Thank you. As you know, I was on the council when we passed the camping ban, and I did vote in support of it. It has been successful in terms of the numbers and the metrics that we laid out. We have seen success. When we passed that, it was a tough decision. I said then, and I will say now, that I would not have done that any sooner than I did. And the reason that I felt like it was time for that was because we had added almost 200 additional shelter beds. And I had heard from enough community members that were feeling unsupported by health and safety concerns in their community. So I did feel like it was time for us to try something. Very... We were very, very clear, this is one in a suite of options, and that our hope is that we don't have to continue to have that camping ban. We are continuing to work together with the county to make sure that we are addressing homelessness, not just with removing people from areas, but addressing the health and safety concerns in encampments. And we have added and have a fully-staffed team of our HEAL team that is out on the street with eight staff, making sure we're connecting people to resources. And I think that that is a vital, vital part of this. And I hope that we will continue to work towards having more shelter and more resources so that eventually we don't need to have that camping ban.
Thank you. Todd Brisky?
I do support the camping ban. It has been effective, especially in my neighborhood. We used to have a big encampment over by Lincoln Hardware. We used to have the streets of Yakima lined. Now we don't. I also think it's well-structured. The 10 blocks from the established homeless shelter means that these homeless shelters will have to be distributed throughout the city. Rather than if it was a citywide camping ban, there might be a tendency to stick all of the homeless shelters into certain areas. We're governed by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision, Martin v. Boise, that says you're not allowed to remove someone unless you have a place for that person to go. Even without that decision, that is the policy that I would go by because you can't make existing illegal for anybody. So the only way this camping ban can be enforced is if we have a bed for that person to go to. And that being the case, I would like to expand and make sure that we have homeless shelters, emergency homeless shelters in all the places that need them so that we can eliminate homelessness throughout the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ogie Diaz?
Thank you. So I did not vote for the Camping Buffer Zone to address homelessness. I don't think that's what it was for. I voted for it to increase safety for folks living in temporary shelters and to keep illegal dumping out of our waterways. And I think it has been mostly successful in those efforts. It has also been a little bit successful in trying to get more folks into shelters that currently exist. I think the options that actually try to end homelessness are those efforts that the city has undergone to actually provide shelter, things like opening low-to-no-barrier shelters and non-congregate shelters and all the other efforts that we've been putting forward on those areas. We also have implemented overnight parking at Holy Rosary, which so far has been one of the city sites that gets more people into permanent supportive housing fastest. So I want to keep getting more innovative of what kinds of options that we give to folks experiencing homelessness so that we can hear their pleas for more options and more things and more services that are going to get them out of their situation and get them into more stable housing situations.
Thank you. Kristen Nguyen?
Thank you. So yes, I supported the camping ban at the time it was proposed, and I continue to support it. I've been following the city's reports on the success it's having. The data there I'm seeing is that more people are accepting shelter and services as a result of this camping ban. And to me, that is the measure of success. In order to address homelessness, we need to start getting at the root cause of why people are there. And we've talked about affordable housing, but there's also too many people suffering from substance use addiction and from mental illness living on our streets that is simply inhumane. And so the more people we can get into shelter and services... And when I say shelter, I want... I believe we need managed shelter where people are actually making progress towards addressing the root cause, like the Tacoma Rescue Mission, which is a beautiful place where people are making progress. It's low barrier. They can come in in whatever state. But while they're there, there are expectations of moving towards addressing the root causes for why they're experiencing homelessness. And that's the model that we need to be supporting and growing in Tacoma.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next question, we'll start with Todd Brisky. And that is, how will you improve the availability and accessibility of support services for individuals experiencing homelessness, including mental health services, addiction treatment, and emergency shelters?
Mental health services, addiction treatment, and emergency shelters are the most essential things that are absolutely required to eliminating homelessness in the city of Tacoma. Regardless of whether the mental health or addiction is what caused them to be homeless, a lot of times, being homeless will cause those things. So even if that wasn't the original reason, we still need to treat that before they will be able to sustain themselves in a house or apartment or anything like that. So we need to make sure that we have enough emergency homeless shelters so that anybody living on the street, if we're going to enforce the camping ban, can move into that shelter. But if that person needs addiction treatment or mental health services before that, then we have to have those available to them at the same time. Those are the three things that I would absolutely focus and redirect funds from other programs to make sure that we got those rock-solid and that we've got a seamless pipeline into that system so that nobody falls through the cracks with an overly complicated system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to Ogie Diaz.
Thank you. So I think the biggest barrier to providing services for folks experiencing homelessness, including mental health services, addiction treatment, and emergency shelters, is funding. So the more that we can get cracking with our state, federal, local partners, the more we can better leverage dollars that exist and those that will exist in the future to create funding for the services that currently exist or creating new innovative programs. One of the big funding streams that should be coming down the pike soon is the opioid settlement money. I would love to use some of that funding to help get folks out of experiencing active addiction, out of that, help actually treat people with substance use disorder. We've got Alternative Response going in the city of Tacoma as a pilot program with our fire department. So I'm looking at how we can keep leveraging the programs that exist and the new pilot programs and building them out and really making sure that we are using the tools that we have and creating the tools for the problem we need and not looking at this through antiquated criminal justice lens or sort of bootstrappy, expecting folks to be able to lift themselves up out of their situations without the wraparound supports that government should be providing to its... um should be providing to its um residents.
Thank you. Kristin Nguyen.
Great. Uh, so in in order to adequately address this issue, we need to start working regionally. And actually, I would say we need to make sure that the state is doing its role. There've been a series of articles in the Seattle Times talking about how the state has really let us down with regard to mental health. And I'd like, you know, the the governor was supposed to stand up community um facilities to address mental health for those that were on the civil side and of course as and the criminal side as well. And we're just simply failing. And we need to, we, the city needs to use its voice for the third largest city in the state. We should be, we should be working cooperatively with the state to make sure it's playing its role in standing up the mental health facilities that we need. Tacoma can't do this alone. Pierce County is also an important player in this thing. We need to be working with them and with our congressional delegation. Again, we cannot do this alone. Um, it's it's an enormous issue and um we need to find a way to all work together to to resolve it. Um, I was a, I am and have been a supporter of the Pierce County Village. Um, I'm disappointed that there are roadblocks being thrown up and I think I would really hope that we find a way to find a place for that because that is a a beautiful model that we need to find a way to to make happen. But um and then any money that we have, we need to make sure we're spending wisely. And on the council, I will be looking at um looking at accountability measures to make sure we're not, that the money's being spelt spent wisely.
Thank you. Um, and so next we go to, I've lost track here. Um, we go to um Ogi Diaz, no, I'm sorry. I was moving some things around and I lost track. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Christina Walker.
Thank you. Um, I first want to acknowledge that this is a major gap. Um, and it is so, so important that we figure out um how to fix this. So there are a couple of things I'm really excited about right now. This last week, we got our first report from our HOPE team, um which is, as my colleague, uh council member Diaz mentioned, our alternative response. And that is making uh sure that we have behavioral health specialists, registered nurses and social workers, not only out on the streets, uh because I know there those have existed before, but available when you call nine one one. Um, so they are working with the fire department, um but working in tandem with um both fire and law enforcement to um not only respond to emergencies, but address existing issues, um follow up with cases um and really work with folks. I think some of the other creative uh spaces that we're working in, um Pierce Transit is adding um uh alternative response to buses so that they can, they're out in the community more than any of us, right? Uh, so they're able to, uh, this is a pilot project that they're adding um to their facilities. Um, and in conjunction with a grant actually from UW. And then also, uh, the, our libraries have thought really creatively about where they're adding a social worker to be on staff because they know, again, they're out in the community more than the rest of us. So addressing some of those needs head on going to people where they uh where they are and and where they're needed.
Thank you, Karen.
So moving on to the next question. How will you incentivize the development of affordable housing units in Tacoma, especially in areas where housing costs are rising rapidly? Are there specific zoning changes or financial incentives you would champion? Um, can we start with Ogi Diaz, please?
All right, my mute button eluded me. Uh, it was elusive. Um, so, uh, I think I've already spoken a little bit about this, but one of the best ways that we can incentivize um development of affordable housing units in Tacoma is to change our zoning laws with Home in Tacoma. Um, beyond that, the city has the M F T E tools that we've already been using. I think part of Home in Tacoma Phase Three should include more model sort of blueprints for folks to put in ADUs. Um, and I think that's really going to help cut costs for developers looking for plans that are plug and play on lots that are already existing in our footprint. Um. Some of the other financial incentives, I would assume we can help, as I mentioned earlier, partner with um city, county, and state officials to bring in dollars. Um, for example, before I was on council, I helped leverage um bringing in housing dollars into Tacoma um from the federal government. And I think that modeling public-private partnerships is one of the best ways that we can help bring in housing beyond the work that's already being done by private um or public housing authorities like the Housing Authority and Habitat for Humanity. Um, so that's partnering with public-private is one of the best ways and just really changing these zoning codes, opening up the ability for folks to actually bring in um more ADUs and more row homes, more townhomes, changing what our city actually looks like for the future so we can grow.
Thank you. Can we move on to Christian Nguyen?
Yeah, thank you. So, right, question one touched on this, but uh the policies I would again want to look at are um are there barriers, unintended barriers in our permitting process itself? So whether it's unnecessary delay due to staff being hard to reach um or other areas that where there's delay built into our process. Delay is money. Um, yeah, look at the code. Is there a way for us to streamline it? So it's much, so it's easier. And if we can move through the process quicker, there are less costs um that we're gonna gonna get passed on to the home ultimate purchaser of the home. So, you know, we need to reduce barriers. Um. Definitely offer incentives. So it could be permitting fees. I just learned that thirty percent of the cost of any housing unit in Tacoma is fees that are paid to the city itself. Um, if we want to incentivize affordable housing, let's look at reducing those fees for in exchange for more affordable housing. And um, you know, things like density bonuses, I and and, you know, I know the city already does these things, reduce connection fees. Um, and then I think it is important for us to look at um, you know, the burdens we put on developers. I was hearing about this again today in terms of infrastructure. You know, if if we have crumbling infrastructure here in Tacoma, we can't turn around and ask builders to take care of that. We need to make sure that that's a community value that we also share some cost in. So those are the kind of things that if we want to build affordable housing, that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Next, Christina Walker.
Thank you. And um I'm very proud of the work that we have done um since I've been on council, but even before that, to build up our Affordable Housing Trust Fund and leveraging those dollars in partnership with you all is really an important piece of the puzzle. And so um just, I guess, a plug to continue to tell us how you want to use those dollars and how we can make it easier um to leverage those. Um, because as all of my colleagues have said, we don't do this work alone. We can't do this work alone. Um, so finding ways to add to that um will make a huge difference. I think most of the things I have on my list have already been mentioned, the M F T E program. Um, the Home in Tacoma, obviously very important in uh changing the actual zoning laws, um adding uh opportunities for um ADUs, uh working with the county on uh building community land trusts. Um, and then I I mentioned this, I think, in my opening statement, but looking at bonuses as part of Home in Tacoma, this is a both a really important conversation um and one that is upcoming. And I think that that could include things, um, like adding to affordable housing, of course, but also adding to those things that are important to quality of life, um tree canopy, access to transit, um all of those pieces that that make affordable housing um as beautiful, if not more, uh and the quality of life um as as good as it can be in in all of the uh buildings or all the affordable housing that we're building. Um, and I think that makes it more sustainable as well.
Thank you. Finally, Todd Brisky.
I uh on my property, I have an A D U. I like A DUs. I rank out my A D U. I think we should incentivize more folks to build A D Us. Uh, my main focus, though, is building housing that people can buy so that they can build equity, secure their financial future, and eventually use that equity to buy a bigger house. I want to make sure that whatever kind of incentives we can do, fantastic. But if we have to go it alone, build these houses and sell them at cost for like two or three times A M I, uh, I'm totally fine with that. That would even be budget neutral. We wouldn't have to raise funds for anything. We could get houses for like hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, build as much house that we can. Uh, make sure that they're clean and livable. Uh, when I was looking for what the number of houses that I could actually afford, being a median wage earner right now in the city of Tacoma is like five. There's about five houses that are within my price range. And all of them need a lot of work. There's none of them that you could actually just move right into. And I want to incentivize building these affordable houses that an average person could buy and move into without any kind of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we go to the next question, I just want to remind viewers that you can text any questions you have for the candidates to two five three four three nine nine three four three, two five three four three nine nine three four three. So this question starts with Christian Nguyen. And um the question is discrimination in housing can exacerbate the housing crisis. What steps will you take to combat housing discrimination, promote fair housing practices, and ensure equitable access to housing for all residents?
Yep, thank you for that question. So I would be a a strong proponent of rigorous enforcement of fair housing laws. We simply cannot, we cannot tolerate any kind of discrimination. Um, in addition to that, I, what I'd love to see is ma- making sure that the city is providing um programs with there are comprehensive financial counseling services to help all people, first-time home buyers, achieve homeownership. So training on how to save for a down payment, education on the details of purchasing a first home, training and assistance on addressing, you know, barriers in your own personal history, whether it's poor credit um or other things, you know, criminal history that might prove a barrier to uh being able to buy a home. So I I would be a supporter of uh standing up services along that line. And of course, everything that we're doing, right, you know, this conversation about how to increase housing supply. Um, and and by by definition, then bringing down some costs, I mean, and and supporting the construction of entry-level homes, uh that is, would go a long way to making it more equitable for everyone to be able to be a homeowner.
Thank you, Christina Walker.
Thank you for that question. Um, in twenty twenty, the council passed Resolution four zero six two two, our anti-racist transformation or our commitment to anti-racist transformation. Um, and um that was an important turning point in really digging into the work around equity, but the Equity Index far predates that. And so the work that we're doing to invest in this city always uses the Equity Index so that we are investing in communities that have been historically under or not represent or not invested in. So that's a really important foundational piece of all the work that we do. Um, we have an amazing staff in the Office of Equity and Human Rights in Tacoma's Fair Housing Department. But we don't have enough folks. So we have um wonderful people who can guide folks through a discrimination claim um and support them in walking through that, understanding their rights. Um, but we need to fund that at a higher level, and I am certainly supportive of that. Um, we, I also sponsored a study um in um this very topic uh because you you have to have a study before you can actually invest money in it. Um, so a around housing and homeownership, which confirms what we already know, that um black homeownership is far lower than the um amount of black uh residents that we have in Tacoma. So because of that, we were able to invest in our black homeownership program, and I hope we can do more of that. I think that's a really important uh step. And I mentioned earlier the anti um displacement work that I'm doing, and I think that that ties right in here. And we're going to keep uh keep working at that. We've got a lot of options and that'll be coming forward later this year.
Thank you, Todd Brisky.
Housing discrimination is illegal. Uh, anytime it happens, lawsuits should be filed and those perpetrating it should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. And we should make sure that every time it happens, we are prosecuting those people. In addition, part of the requirements or preferences in building starter homes such like that, uh because of Tacoma's past history with redlining and uh neighborhood covenants, I would want that program to have a preference for those who are directly affected by those programs. Those policies of the past barred folks from being able to build generational wealth, which is what I want to do by allowing folks to purchase townhomes or starter homes or condos or anything like that. So they can build e- equity, they can secure their financial future, pass that wealth on to their children. And in the United States, homeownership has been the key way that that has happened. And unfortunately, due to our housing stock and our failure to build houses in the past, I fear that we have a coming generation of permanent renters. And I want to make sure that those renters have an ability to buy a house in the future.
Thank you, Ogi Diaz.
Thank you. Um, so before I was on council, actually long before, I served on the city's Human Rights Commission where we actually reviewed fair housing complaints that came in. And one of the biggest problems that we saw was that not only did um landlords not necessarily know if something was out of compliance, um but tenants often weren't able to know what kind of proof or evidence or documentation they needed to bring to make those um complaints actually um enforceable or actionable in in court cases. So I think some of the best things that we can do as a city is expand our education to landlords and tenants equally to know their rights, know their protections. Um, especially with the new um tenant um protections that the city just passed. We've already started some of that work. I think more of it needs to go on. Um, I've talked with the city staff who was thinking about bringing back the Fair Housing Conference. It was one of the best ways for landlords to learn their obligations as landlords, and I think it was a really good tool for them um so that they would be protected and um no, no landlord wants to be a landlord, so it was a good way for them to get educated. Um, part of the new tenant protections that we passed, I had sponsored a dog breed discrimination prohibition that will actually literally help end discrimination because we know that folks will create bans against certain dog breeds because certain races of folks have those kinds of dogs. And so we're not doing that in the city of Tacoma anymore based on my leadership. And so I'm really excited about the different ways that the city can keep working to end discrimination.
Thank you. I'm going to throw a curve ball now for Karen and everybody else. Um, we have a question from the audience and it rather than change our order of answering, I'm just going to reverse this one from what we just did. So the question from the audience has to do with inclement weather, both freezing and heat, and how outreach workers now are struggling to gather, store, and distribute lifesaving um supplies to unsheltered people throughout the city. So what ideas do you have for coordinating these efforts? So um let's reverse it and we'll start with Ogi Diaz.
Sorry, can you say that one more time? What?
Yeah, it's about it's about the extreme weather events, the hot and the cold, and the fact that outreach workers are really struggling with getting the right supplies and the amount of supplies that are needed by homeless people. So what what do you suggest that the city can do to better coordinate these efforts?
Um, I think the city has a lot of partnerships with folks who are already doing mutual aid, giving out water when it's too hot or sort of using their existing channels through the heel team to get word out to encampments we know of. I think the very problem identified there is that there are lots of folks who are now off the grid, who we don't know, who we can't reach. And so I think the more we can lean into using that word of mouth network um between the mutual aid folks and the folks living in the encampments, the better and making sure that we have tools available for folks, not just in the form of cold, cold um winter shelter or um uh say, smoke shelter, hot weather shelter. Um, expanding when those times are going to be on. I think if you're houseless, you don't know what the weather report is, right, necessarily? You know what you're experiencing. So I think the more that we could get that information to folks when we know as folks with internet in a house, that the heat is coming and I'm going to start cooling the house down. Um, if we can start getting that news out to those networks sooner, I think that will really help with providing more lead time for folks to plan um for where they need to move their items or how they can get to places because getting around town is Um, for where they need to move their items or how they can get to places because getting around town is also not easy. It's certainly not easier when there's wildfire or smoke and they can't breathe well because they have asthma. So I think the more planning that we can, and lead time we can give folks, the better.
Thank you. Todd Biski.
I would want to focus on making sure that we have enough emergency shelter beds to accommodate everybody that might be out there in inclement weather. Uh, so that when a cold snap comes, we can send folks out to go to the various encampments and say like, hey, we got a warm bed for you here. Come on. And if they refuse that, then they refuse that. But I think most people, especially when it gets really, really cold, would be like, okay. Even if I'm not going to permanently come into the system, at least for this one night, uh, I would like to go for it. And so just building up the structure so that we've got enough space for all the folks that might need it. Is the way that I would want to approach that. So that we're using one common system rather than a disparate number of various systems that all have to connect to each other. And sometimes there's miscommunication and then sometimes things don't get done properly and people fall through the cracks. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina Walker?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I may be a little bit of a broken with, uh, broken record, but of course it's, takes partnerships. Um, our um, team and our providers that we contract with do open shelters. Um, and some community centers in, in inclement weather, uh, events, smoke, heat and cold. Um, and I know that those are truly life-saving to some people. I also know that there's been quite a bit of frustration about the hours of those shelters because of course the smoke doesn't go away after nine to five and it, those aren't the exact hours, but um, the, the point is well taken and we don't have the staff and our, our, our partner providers don't have the staff to keep it open twenty-four seven in all cases. So we're working on that and I think that's really, really important. Um, we did, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we opened, the winter of twenty twenty-one, we opened several um, cold weather emergency shelters. One of them was on my street and they just did a phenomenal job of welcoming folks in. I think um, as Todd said, um, getting folks the opportunity to take advantage, even if that's going to be just the one night. Um, and this is another advantage of having that heal team fully staffed because they are talking to more people and able to um, connect them with more services, especially in those emergency situations. I think the other um, really valuable piece here is transit. And our transit agency provides free rides to any of the inclement weather shelters whenever we are in one of those events, which is incredible. But another thing that we need to get the word out about.
Thank you. And now Christian Nguyen.
Great. Thank you for that question. Yeah, so, right, I'm gonna repeat things that have already been said, but um, my, my understanding of people experiencing homelessness is there is this trust, trust issue. Um, in order to get people to come into shelter, you need to build relationships. Uh, so it makes sense to me that the people that are out there um, on a daily basis, like the Tacoma Rescue Mission and the heel team and others that have developed the relationships would be the best people to be going out in times of inclement weather. Um, cold particularly is an enormous killer. Um, to, to, you know, reach out and, and in an ideal world, get the people to come into shelter. As Todd said, um, you know, even if it is for just one night, perhaps that one night will be the reason they choose to stay. And um, and start working towards n- no longer living on the street. So um, yeah, I, so it sounds like, I, I love, I love learning that transit uh, actually provides a way for people to get to the emergency shelters. That's wonderful. Obviously, this is something the city should have a plan for. Um, and I'm, I'm guessing there is one, but um, if not, that's something I'd be happy to work on, on council to make sure that we have planned because we can foresee that there will be extremely cold, cold times and hot.
Thank you. So we'll go back to Karen now with the regular order.
So on to the next question. Accurate data is crucial for addressing homelessness. How will you work to improve data collection and reporting on homelessness in Tacoma? To inform policy decisions and track progress in reducing homelessness. Can we begin with Todd Brisky?
So my whole candidacy, I don't have any infrastructure or anything. So everything I've learned, it hasn't been open source data. So I love open source data. I like being able to go find the actual reports, read through the actual numbers. I think that's essential for the citizens to be able to be informed. Sometimes you're going to like the city website or something like that and you gotta search around and you gotta do a whole bunch of different keywords in order to try to find the data that you want. It's not necessarily in the right format. So I want to make as much data as possible, open source. Uh, I love having like dashboards, being able to like see in real time, like what all the numbers are and make sure that when we're implementing a program that we can see the actual numbers reflected in the reports. So I'm absolutely a big fan of making sure that we have as much data available as possible. Just so that folks out there can make sure that the council's doing what it's supposed to be doing. Uh, transparency and all of that fun stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christina Walker.
Thank you. Um, the data is so important and we had a presentation this week. Um, a joint council session with the county council and we had a presentation both from the city's homeless team and the county's homeless team. Um, but also a consultant that came in and presented um, what they call a unified regional approach. Um, which I think that um, most, uh, well, those of us around the table were very excited about. I hope that other jurisdictions in Pierce County are as well. Um, but both entities have the um, have data as a top priority. And also specifically have a goal to create this by name list. And my understanding from providers is that that is not only industry uh, best practice, but that our providers in Tacoma are on their way to creating that. Um, it makes it easier to um, serve our homeless population and make sure that we're um, providing them with the services they need and that um, the providers and the shelters talk to each other along the way. Um, so I'm really optimistic that we will be able to dig deeper on um, data. Both in that very specific piece, that by name list, but also in working together between the city and the county's teams. Um, to look at homelessness as truly a regional issue rather than just the city siloed um, next to the county, next to all the other jurisdictions.
Thank you. Next, Kristin Nguyen.
I, thank you. Uh, right, so obviously data is very important. Uh, we can't know how we're doing addressing the issue if we have, we, we don't have an accurate sense of how large our, our um, unhoused population is. So I mean, some ideas that came to mind are um, making sure, I, I mean, we've got a great community. When, when we're doing the point in time count, make sure we're getting the word out. You know, so that everybody who might want to participate um, is able to do it because they're well informed. Um, you know, the heel teams out there, I presume that they um, that they capture all the data and that that is going into a central place that's accessible to all the decision makers. Um, but if it's not, that's something I would want to work on. I mean, they're, they're in the trenches day in, day out. We, we should make sure that we're taking advantage of that and gathering all that data and um, you, putting it in a format that it's usable. So, you know, again, obviously data is very important and um, we need accurate data to know how, you know, whether what we're doing to address um, the challenges in front of us are actually working.
Thank you. And Ogi Diaz?
Thank you. Um, so I think one of the ways that we can help improve our data collection have actually been asking about of our heel team is what more demographic data we can be requesting. We know that LGBTQ folks make up a disproportionate amount of our youth. Um, but we don't necessarily know that stat yet for adults since it would be nice to be able to really identify who is not being, who is houseless so that we can try to identify how we can find housing solutions for those populations of people. It can't be um, directly causational, but I think it, it's gotta be a big factor. One of the other things that I really like to ask our heel team when I get to meet with them one-on-one is what trends they're seeing. Because they are the people actually literally out there doing the work, collecting the data, creating the data. Um, so while the data may not tell me the thing that they, that um, I may not see the thing that they um, see in the data. Asking them, I think helps spark, oh, you know, I have noticed this trend or that trend. And I particularly like to ask around what um, gaps there are, what reasons there are that folks aren't accepting shelter options that are available. So that we can try to come up with new options that folks will actually want to use because that will help get more people off the streets. Um, and help us diversify the array of shelter options that we're giving to community. So data is pretty critical in that, um, both anecdotal and um, with statistical.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the next question, we'll start with Christina Walker. And the question is collaboration with community organizations and nonprofits is vital in addressing the shortage of affordable housing and homelessness. How will you foster partnerships with local organizations to enhance homelessness prevention and prevent, excuse me, and support efforts to provide more affordable housing throughout the city? And I know some of you have touched on this already, but um, please elaborate and let's make this sixty seconds.
Great, thank you. Um, I think I've shown clearly that um, partnerships is something that I not only uh, look forward to, to building, but am good at building and I don't think that we do this work without partnerships. Um, a couple uh, that I want to highlight that we haven't talked about already. Of course, the Affordable Housing Consortium is a really important partner for us. Um, SHAPE, the um, Southland Housing Affordability Partners. Um, the Coalition to End Homelessness, also an obvious one in this conversation, but I don't think we've mentioned that yet. I talked about some of the creative partnerships that Tacoma Public Libraries is doing, um, as well as Pierce Transit. Um, I also want to highlight our nonprofit partners because when we talk about that Affordable Housing Trust Fund and leveraging those dollars. It's not just um, your sort of typical developers that are doing that. The Korean Women's Association, the um, Asia Pacific Cultural Center um, are all uh, investing in housing. And that uh, is both vital to our success in this area. Uh, but also uh, addresses that diversity of types of housing uh, across our city. And I look forward to more and more partnerships like that.
Thank you. Christian Nguyen?
Yeah, so obviously partnerships, the city can't do this work alone and um, we're not the one building houses. So it's very, or rental units. So it's very important that we partner with the community that actually does the work. Um, so that we understand how our policies um, might actually end up being a barrier to providing more housing. Um, so you, we need to make sure that our policies are well informed. When we, when we decide, oh, we're going to make these rental housing code changes. We need to make sure that we've talked to people about what is the ramification if we um, if we impose this particular restriction. So um, we need to be partnering with the people that actually are doing the work um, to understand our, how our policies will likely affect supply.
Thank you. Ogi Diaz?
Thank you. As mentioned, I think one of our best partnerships um, that can continue to move forward is the, with the Coalition to End Homelessness. I think they're folks who are really deep and close to the um, the barriers that folks are facing. And they help give us more information that we can run better policies on. I think one of the more traditional places where I feel like we used to talk about more before the pandemic um, is Tacoma Public Schools. Homelessness is most visible in our schools to our teachers. Um, especially for kids experiencing homelessness. So I think the more we can partner with the schools to try and get resources out to those families, a lot of them are probably car camping, RV camping. Um, if they're so lucky, um, to help make sure that folks have the resources they need to get um, families into shelter. Um, and then I think thinking through some non-traditional partnerships like conservation orgs, Park Dish, the Park District. Uh, making sure our hiking and birding community knows the numbers for three, one, ones. Of thinking of the folks who are actually out in the outside. Um, making sure that they know what resources are available to report and to um, assist our neighbors who are houseless.
Thank you. And Todd Biski.
So yeah, I want to partner with everybody who wants to achieve the same goals as uh, me. Uh, anybody who wants to build affordable houses, anybody that wants to reduce the costs. But at the same time, I want to make sure that when we are spending taxpayer money, that we are doing it in a judicious manner. And make sure that we are getting the return on investment that we're supposed to. Making sure that when we're spending X amount of dollars, we're getting the expected result. And if we're not, then we might have to look for another partner who might be in that same space. I also want to make sure that uh, if, if we can incentivize folks to help us build the housing, fantastic. Because I would prefer the city not have to build the houses than ourselves, but if necessary, we might have to. And partnering with the local labor unions and whatnot to build these houses and then sell them to uh, individuals at cost is a route that I would be willing to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to do another um, pop quiz here. Um, this came from the audience a few minutes ago. So do you support the proposed six to nine month eviction moratorium? What effect do you think it would have on cost and availability of affordable units if the tenant bill of rights passes? So that's two questions. And let's give this sixty seconds and we'll go again in reverse order of what we just did so that we can keep our sequence. Um, so we would start with Todd Biski. Do you want me to repeat any of that?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, okay. So the first question is, do you support the proposed six to nine month eviction moratorium? Second question is, what effect do you think it will have on cost and availability of affordable housing if the tenant bill of rights passes?
I do not support eviction moratoriums. If the city wants to enforce a, uh, an eviction moratorium, then the city should have to pay the landlord. The rent. Otherwise, you could be in a situation where you're stuck with someone not paying rent. But then you're losing money and it's actually costing you money. And that could cause landlords to just drop out of the system entirely because they don't want to deal with a headache. I want to make sure that there's as many mom and pop landlords as we can possibly get. I don't want the whole market to be taken over by corporate landlords or real estate trusts or hedge funds or anything like that. I want the landlords to be local, to have relationships with the actual tenants. To make sure that there is a, a good relationship there rather than just a voice on the other end of the phone line. Thanks.
Thank you. Ogi Diaz?
Yeah, um, I do not support the current Prop One proposition on the ballot. Um, I think the six to nine month eviction moratorium they've got in there is not written in a way that I think the city will be able to action on. I actually think um, if passed, um, folks will probably um, sue immediately. And then those tenant protections will be available to folks as right away as I think the drafters would initially have wanted. Um, in the last round of tenant protections that the city passed, I actually did sponsor a moratorium that was within um, uh, legally tested grounds that Seattle has done. Um, and so I would support something like that that has already been tested, but um, sort of going out on our own limb in the city, um, especially without having buy-in from the city as currently written. I don't think will do any world of good for um, tenants who won't be able to access those protections right away. And for landlords who will be put out of business by having to fill the bill all alone.
Thank you. Christian Nguyen?
Yes, I, I would not support a six to nine month eviction um, moratorium. It, it would definitely increase um, the cost. It, it's an enormous risk. So it would drive small mom and pop retirees, teachers, first responders out of the market. They couldn't bear a risk like that. I'm, I, I understand the average time to get an eviction is about five months. So you have to remember that when you're thinking about also imposing on top of it a six to nine month. You're, you're making the year base, you're making it basically. Um, just an, too onerous for it, for an average person. You will end up with just mega. You will end up with just mega housing providers. And my understanding is they really know how to nickel and dime people. Um so you, yeah, we wanna keep our mom and pop and we need a balanced approach. We we can't make it so onerous that we drive the small players out of the market that that will reduce supply and increase cost and hurt the very people we're trying to help renters. Thank you. And Christina Walker.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I similarly, I do not support um a six to nine month eviction moratorium. I think part of the the challenge is, uh, and we saw this play out in during the pandemic is that um, an eviction moratorium is not free rent. And so eventually those costs catch up with the um, the the renter and it becomes uh potentially more expensive and certainly more onerous on both the renter and the landlord's side. And so I I really support um more programs that help with keeping people housed um and paid for. So things that we did like the utility assistance that actually help um change the bottom line for the month. Our GRIT program, Growing Resilience in Tacoma, where we actually support is our guaranteed income program that we piloted. Um, ways that we got money in people's pockets so that they could use that for what they needed um and could stay housed. So that ultimate um goal uh still, but not the eviction moratorium. And I will just say, I know I'm over time, but just that I don't support um the initiative one, and I don't think that that will have a positive effect on housing supply.
Thank you. Now we'll go back to Karen and the regular script. Number ten.
So, um, next question, public input and accountability. How do you plan to engage with the community to gather input on affordable housing and homelessness policies? And how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the implementation of these policies? Can we begin with Kristen Nguyen, please?
Yes, sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Of course. Public input and accountability. How do you plan to engage with the community to gather input on affordable housing and homelessness policies? And how will you ensure transparency and accountability in the implementation of these policies?
Right, so I'm happy to do what I'm doing right now, which is I am going around to every single neighborhood in the city talking to voters. Um, and you know, I personally am happy to go to all the neighborhood councils um and and engage with them. You know, I know the city typically holds, you know, when on as part of council, but they 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 hold meetings around the city. I would be an advocate for that kind of thing. And um, you know, let's find a way to get the results of the information that we're gathering uh easily available. I I don't, I don't personally find the city's website um as helpful as it could be. I think there are ways we can make it much easier for people to get information about the critical things that are going on in the city. I am able to find it because I know how to drill down. Most people don't have the time. And so uh in terms of transparency and being responsive, which is so important to voters. We, I think it it would be money well spent to look at simplifying our website and making sure that we're putting in easily accessible places, key data on things like uh uh on the key things that the city's working on. So um, yeah, I'm a big believer in being responsive and transparent and I'm um I'm personally a very approachable person. I've I've been doing this work just as a citizen. I take phone calls and emails from complete strangers who reach out to me about problems they're safe facing on public safety. And I'll be able to do that as a city council person as well.
Thank you. Uh, next, Ogi Diaz.
It looks like we lost our timer. Do you want me to just wing it?
Sure, um, I'll, I'll give you some oral cues.
Okay, just making sure. I I observationally, I think we all saw, so I just wanted to point it out um for folks who maybe can't can't see what we can see. Um, so um, I think one of the best ways to engage community is trying to find folks where they're at. Um, so in addition to things like town halls, um, reaching out through neighborhood councils, through existing structures. Um, I think that's how we find some of the folks who are interested in affordable housing and homelessness policies. But we also have to reach out to those who are um living these experiences. So if there is um folks mobilizing around tenants' rights, going and talking to those groups, finding out what folks are experiencing um in their um rental um concerns and issues, trying to find affordable housing. If there are folks um uh like the Coalition to End Homelessness, they have folks with lived experiences. I think it's not very helpful to make policies about people for people that um are not in the room. So I think the more that we can engage those folks, bring them in the fold. Actually have them be a part of the policymaking, the better policies that we can create.
Two seconds. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, and uh I just, I think I'm a big advocate of that. And then the more of the city's data that we keep putting out there, we have a good data. Um, repository there on the city's website and finding more ways to get that community information out is also gonna keep being helpful for to spark question and and curiosity from from communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Todd Biski.
So one of the things that I would look forward to the most is going to all the neighborhood councils and just sitting in the back and listening, being available for anybody to ask me questions or tell me their stories and tell me how specific policies are directly affecting their material lives and stopping them from doing things that they want to accomplish. I also think that the city website could use an overhaul uh both uh stylistically, just so that it comes up properly when you're viewing it on the phone. Uh, sometimes you gotta turn the phone sideways, you gotta zoom things in, zoom things out, making it just nice to read, easy to read. Making sure that we're highlighting the data that folks are looking for. Uh, I often do find myself just like doing a Google search or something rather than using the actual site search to try to figure out what I'm trying to get to, just because it's, it can be a little clunky to get around. Uh, but I just want to get as much data out so that people can hold folks accountable to the greatest extent possible. And make sure that when a policy is implemented, that we're seeing the results in absolute data numbers that we can make sure that everything is going according to plan and change course when it's not.
Thank you. And Christina Walker.
Thank you. Um, I think there's a couple of different pieces of this. I will first say that accountability and transparency is definitely a value of mine, particularly in this job. I think it's incredibly important. Um, and I think that there's a a lot of things that we could do better. I think we lost some connections with community through COVID. Um, and I am eager to sort of rebuild some of those things that as all of you have said, you know, going out and meeting with community. Particularly folks with lived experience. I think um Coalition to End Homelessness is a really great resource. Um, and one of the balances that we're always trying to strike on council is, um, you know, we have amazing staff and they attend the Coalition to End Homelessness meeting every week and have um really built relationships there. So um, I I don't often go, uh, and I certainly should and could and will. And we have to trust each other cuz we can't all be every place all at once. And so I'm keeping that communication between staff and council open in addition to council and community. Um, the city tracks absolutely everything. I think one of the things we do really well is accountability. And yet, we don't share that with the community real well. Um, it has been mentioned that the website is not great. Um, if you've seen the dashboard that we put together for Resolution four zero six two two, our anti-racist transformation dashboard. It is so dense with information because we've done so much. It is, it's unreadable unless you're tracking it super, super closely. So we have the data, we have the information, we're tracking our own accountability, but we need to do a much better job of communicating that out with the the community and residents in in Tacoma.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to closing statements and in reverse order of the opening statement. So each person has one minute to we to give a closing statement and we'll start with Todd Biski.
So I wanna make sure that every Tacoma has the ability to buy a house, a condo, a town home. Something that allows them to take control of their own financial future, start building that generational wealth, that equity that they can pass on to their kids or use it to buy a bigger house. I wanna make sure that these houses are going to actual Tacominos. So we have some restriction, like this house can only be sold to uh a Tacoma who's been renting for ten years in the city of Tacoma. I wanna make sure that those folks who were directly affected by our past unconstitutional policies like redlining and neighborhood covenants get priority service when buying these houses so that they can build up that equity for themselves and pass it on to their children and try to make everything a little bit better. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina Walker.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be part of this panel tonight and for the thoughtful questions. Um, really made uh me think and uh work to uh get prepared for the the panel. And I think that's a really important function that uh the Affordable Housing Consortium serves. Um, everyone in Tacoma deserves access to housing, whether that's renting or homeownership. And it is our commitment to um work towards more affordable housing as well as addressing homelessness to functional zero so that if there is a a homeless experience that it is short and one time. We don't do that work alone. We do that with partnerships, private, public-private partnerships um and creative creative partnerships. Um, creativity is the name of the game. If it was easy, we would have solved it by now. And I love the work that we do in thinking creatively and working together in community. And I can't wait to continue the work um to address affordable housing in our community.
Thank you. Kristen Nguyen. Thank you very much for this opportunity to participate in um, you know, obviously a very important conversation. We all deserve, you deserve to live in a city where you can afford to live. What we need, what wasn't part of this conversation that I think needs to be a part of it is um making sure our community has the skill set in order to 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 have quality family wage jobs. So much of the conversation was premised on the notion that you are earning minimum wage. We have to expect more and for our, we have to provide more for our community so that they're not they're not earning only minimum wage. So that's job skills, that's workforce development, that's making sure our education system is top-notch, making sure we have brought family wage employers to Tacoma. That's economic development so that we can all thrive. So we need to look for policies to help build more housing. At the same time, let's support our communities so that they can have a really thriving life. Thank you. And Ogi Diaz.
Yeah, again, I wanna thank the League, United Tacoma, and the Affordable Housing Consortium for this opportunity tonight. Um, as a city council member, we voted last year to secure a hundred and one million dollars towards affordable housing and homelessness relief, including sixteen million for sheltering and five hundred thousand dollars for down payment assistance. I think it takes looking at the housing um shortage and crisis from not just those experiencing homelessness, all the way up to those experiencing um rental burdens, trying to get into houses, trying to start building that equity, trying to start building that institutional um family wealth. Um one of the strategies we didn't talk about that I wanted to make sure I mentioned is trying to incentivize downtown offices shifting into housing. It'd be wildly expensive to retrofit some of these old buildings, but I'd love to see what more the city can do to help partner with private developers on doing that. And I think it just really takes all of us working together, seeing something, saying something, and government continuing to be more transparent and accountable to for folks. And I fo- look forward to being a part of that solution on the council.
Thank you. Now we go back to Karen.
Thank you for your participation in this forum. Thank you very much for the candidates. Um, for for position seven, we have Ogi Diaz and Kristen Nguyen. For position eight, we have Christina Walker and Todd Biski. Be sure to vote on or before November seventh. Before you do, also check out the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide, V O T E four one one. You can find it at V O T E four one one dot org and go to V O T E W A dot org to check your voter registration. Both sites identify ballot issues and candidate information specific to your own voting precinct. We encourage everyone to use that as a resource in addition to the standard voters guide. You will find our other candidate forums and a link to the recording of this one at our website. L W V T P C dot org under election slash voting. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody.